All right, are we ready?
Yes.
Yes, I call this meeting to order. I'm gonna do the invocation real quick. And we're not gonna recite the Our Father, I just gotta say a few words. It's been a real rough time for a lot of people in our community and I ask God for some strength so that we can get through this. And that council is able to continue to function and make important decisions and do what's right for our community. And that this whole thing ends very soon. And now the pledge allegiance. Hold on a second, I'm gonna share the screen so we can see the flag. Can everyone see the flag?
Yes.
If you wanna cover your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under one individual.
With liberty and justice for all. Okay. Trying to make this is more like the real meeting as possible, all right. We have no public comments and we have no response to public comments. In the future, if you wanna have public comments or you wanna do something like that, the best thing to do is have somebody email you and I would advise the public if they have a question about something we're doing, email one of your council members or they can email the city manager and he will forward it to us. And then we will make sure that, what just happened? Steve, you're sharing your screen with everyone. By accident, okay. Now, and also too, if somebody has a question or there's a concern, forward it and then we can read it and then we can respond to it just like as if they were speaking in public. But right now, it's just not safe to have the public, you know, all of us in the same room so we can listen to the public do this. Also too, if you, I lost my train of thought now, oh, if you, if you're gonna have to do a presentation or anything like that, there's a way to share the screen. And we'll probably set that up ahead of time, we won't do it like at the last minute, but there is a couple of people that might have to share some things today. So right now, we have some communication, so Heidi, you wanna cover them?
The Memorial Day Parade application was submitted for Monday, May 25th. Fingers crossed it can happen from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. on East Main Street and it would be starting at Easttown Plaza.
All right, so you all had that application in the packet, is there anybody who has any questions or any concerns about that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Well, I'd be very happy if we can do it, Gino.
Well. And the next one is fast pitch softball, I think.
So the next two are really informational, letting you know which parks have been requested for which sports. So both Batavia Girls Fast Pitch Softball, that's scheduled to run from April 1st to August 30th at Lyons and Williams Park, but they only need Williams until mid-June. And they do coordinate and work with Notre Dame when they have games.
That's the, those are the schedule, the monthly schedules that was provided in the packet.
Correct.
April, May, June, and July and August, and it shows you each day and what's going on and what times. So that's there for your reference.
And similarly, Notre Dame baseball and softball, they are looking for the same fields, Lyons and Williams. These would be after school from 3:00 to 6:00 at Williams Park and 3:00 to 5:00 at Lyons and those dates run from April 1st to May 20th.
Okay, anybody have any concerns on any of that?
No.
Okay.
Wait, I have a question, does that interfere with the senior little league? The plays out there?
No, it shouldn't because I don't think they use the same field, right? But they don't use the ball field, do they? Isn't there another field off to the side? I mean, Heidi, do you know if that's the case?
I am not sure, these are the only two applications that we received so far for use of the parks.
Oh, okay.
All right, I would assume that if they were gonna do it, if they do and there's a conflict, then we're gonna have to iron it out and they should be able to work it out amongst themselves, I'm sure. All right.
If I could comment, it should be separate fields at the same, at Williams Park, so it shouldn't have to be a conflict.
That's what I thought, I thought there was another field across the way there.
Correct, they're using the softball field, Little League uses the hardball field, two different fields at the same park.
Okay, that's what I thought, I kinda thought, all right, thank you, Matt. The next council conference meeting will be held Monday, April 27th at 7:00 p.m. The same way we're doing it now, a Zoom conference meeting unless something changes and the state opens up. At this point, the last I heard the state is at least closed till the end of April and they're gonna reassess at that point, so I'm not even sure. We might even be going into May doing this, so, but at this point, our next meeting is gonna be a Zoom conference meeting. Now we have the City Center Concourse Roof Project, Marty had some things to explain about that with the roof over cost or whatever.
Ah, yes, and I've talked to Matt, he can explain a couple of the details in relationship to what was going on. The, the real summary of it basically is that they did some uncovering inside of the concourse around the, around the skylights and discovered some differences in there that could have raised a potential for, you know, that raise a potential for, they're gonna have to do things a little bit differently there than they thought. And Matt, I'll let you take it from there.
The original construction roof project included the removal of the skylight, several of which were broken and were leaking. The design of the roof project was based off of the original construction drawings. When they started to remove some of the drywall and expose the work, the construction was actually different than the original design drawing for it. So fortunately, we didn't have anything torn off yet, we were able to call in the architect along with the contractor and myself and we really brainstormed the most cost-effective way to do it and found a solution. That solution has an additional cost of $13,040. The proposal in front of the council members this evening is for the change order for $13,040 to affect that change in addition to a total allowance of $30,000 in case there's any additional changes that are unforeseen, items that are uncovered and would allow the Director of Public Works to authorize any changes in that amount. Really well that's doing is preventing a delay where a stop work would happen before council could authorize it. I really do not expect any additional changes. Most of the preliminary work where any investigation would be done has been completed. So it's unlikely we're gonna find anything more that I think that's really unfounded or outside of the scope of work. But it does give a little bit of authority to allow the project to move forward if something else unforeseen does happen. And hopefully at the end, the only item that's a per square foot or, or cost, per unit cost item is some deck replacement. So there's still a possibility that that could be under what is estimated and the project could still come in under, under the budget.
Any, everybody have any questions for Matt or Marty, based on?
Yes, see my hand?
Yeah, you're waving, that's not the hand, but it'll work.
I don't have the other one. I don't wanna wave, I wanted a question.
What's your question?
My question is, where's this money coming from?
This money would be coming out of the facilities reserve. And there's over $100,000 in that reserve currently.
Okay, it's, it's not coming from the mall reserves or what?
No, it's the actual facility reserves, not the mall reserves, it's not have that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, and again, just so you know, if they don't use this money, then it goes right back into the reserves and it's not gonna be wasted. It'll, it's just there for emergencies because otherwise, it might be two weeks before we have another council meeting and we gotta delay the mall for two more weeks while we wait to allocate the money, so I think it makes sense.
Yes, yes.
So anyone else have any questions or concerns in reference to that?
No. No.
So are we in consensus to move that to today's business meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so they could. The next thing is the foreclosed property auction, Marty, did you wanna cover that as well? That was like $697 East Main, I believe.
Yes, we had a very interesting piece of property there that, that doesn't have what it appears, a front entryway coming off the highway. It's, it's, it's a solid curve right where that particular house sits. And so we were concerned, honestly, I was concerned whether we'd even get a bidder on this piece of property. We did get one, Mr. Joshua Dahl did the amount of $10,000 and Heidi provided a recommendation memo recommending to approve the sale of the listed property. There are no outstanding taxes on any city properties that are owned by the bidder, in other words, the bidder doesn't have any outstanding taxes on the books, at least from the clerk treasurer's office. The inspection department has reviewed the property and the bidder, and they have expressed no objections to the sales. And for, for us, you know, if we can have this back in private hands and somebody redevelop it, we're, we're happy to see that and we appreciate the vetting of our departments of this and feel comfortable and recommending approval of the sale.
Now, just, just so you know, I'm gonna show you something real quick. Okay, can everybody see that map?
Yes.
Okay, except for the people on the phone and I understand that you're not gonna be able to see it. What I'm putting on the screen right now is a map, a Google map of the property. You'll notice the unique. Side, you can see there's a driveway going in over here. There's a driveway over there, but for some reason, this property steps down off of East Main Street and there is no driveway there. So it really puts it into an awkward situation, okay? Let me go back to that. So you can see from the aerial view, there, it's kinda landlocked in there, it's only walk sidewalk in. So I don't know what's gonna happen there, I don't know how these people are gonna, if they're gonna live there, are they gonna try to rearrange that? I mean, that's up to them, but just so you know, it, it was kind of an odd piece of property and, and the house itself might be valued slightly more than the price. But under the circumstances, you know, that was the bid and, and we wanna get it back on the tax rolls, right? So.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions in reference to that?
I do, Gino. Just a, just a question is, once the new owner takes ownership of it, is, is there a chance that they might come to us asking somehow how they might be able to put a driveway in?
Very possible and, and I guess, you know, we could, we can handle that when, when the time comes, but they would have to do extensive lifting work. I don't even know what they would have to do to access that because it's basically a quick, it's a really like a set of stairs, like eight stairs that go down from the road into that lower area, then that's where the house is. So they'd have to make, they'd be driving down and leaving the house, they'd have to come up a pretty steep hill. So I don't know how they would do it, but they would have, that'd be up to them to figure out and they, and they know what it looks like, they bought it.
So just, just out of curiosity though, would they have to go to like to the planning board for that?
Good question, Matt, Matt, are you on, could you, Matt's there, hold on. Matt?
Yeah.
Jump in.
That, that property it, when construction occurred, and it's, it really wasn't feasible to put a driveway into that spot. And you'll notice your map showed it, there's parking, on-street parking right there, that's one of the few spots where there's actually a cutout. And it was specific for those properties to accommodate that unique topography and the inability to put a drive-down driveway into that parcel. So I don't know that there's really a feasible way to even do it if somebody wanted to without extensive fill being added to that area.
So they could at least park their car overnight in that little cutout area that's been allowed for them?
That is correct.
Okay, so then that would solve that problem, I didn't know if that was allowed, on, you know, overnight parking was allowed there or not.
It's pretty specific to that property because of the unique situation there and it was an allowance for the design of Main Street when it was done back in 2004.
So that basically gives them at least two to possibly three cars that they can park there on that little cutout, so I guess that solves that problem. But I just wanted to show you that because we're able to do that on this map and I thought it'd be good to show the public and show everybody what we're talking about. It's a small little house located in kind of an odd little area and it's now been foreclosed. So we're gonna authorize if it's okay with council, my question to Marty would be, have we vetted the owner? He has no outstanding code violations or anything like that as part of the policies and procedures for selling property like that? You're not coming through, Marty, for some reason, I don't have any audible on you. No audible, Marty, for some reason.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, Marty.
All right, it's based on what we're looking at, no, there's no outstanding taxes that this buyer of the property owes. Inspection department has reviewed the property. And there's no code violations apparently on file for the person that wants to buy this property either.
So there's no reason why, there's not any major reason why we shouldn't let this auction, foreclosed property auction go through, right?
Right.
Okay, any council members have any questions or concerns in reference to it?
No.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, is anything else anyone would like to cover in the conference meeting? Because if we don't, we'll move right into the business meeting. Okay, so a motion to adjourn the conference?
So moved.
Got it. Bob motions and John seconds.
Yep.
And if you would please call the roll, Heidi?
Houseperson Pajkowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Vili.
Yes.
Pacino.
Yes.
Penali.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karaz.
Yes.
Okay. Goes over, and I now call to order the, I call to order the business meeting. And you've had a copy of the February financials for 2020, does anyone have any questions or concerns reference to those?
No.
No? No? Okay, so we consider a consensus of those being approved. And now you've also received the March 2020 business meeting minutes. Does anyone have any concerns reference to anything that's omitted or improperly wrote, transcribed in there?
No.
No.
Okay, so we're all in consensus to move that over, or we're on consensus to approve those business meeting minutes.
Yes.
Okay, the agenda items are just the two that we just moved over from the special conference. Resolution 36 2020, the the city center roof alterations, who would like that one?
I'll take it.
Okay, Bob, you have that one? And the resolution 30 2020, the sale of the auctioned property at East Main Street.
I'll take it.
Want that one?
That was Patty.
Patty. City attorneys report?
Yes, Council President, Members of Council, George Van Ass, beaming. Since this broke about three weeks, four weeks ago, we've been working with the city manager's office, Marty, Rachel, as well as department heads to address questions that have come up during the course of the COVID crisis, trying to address concerns, issues, things of that sort in our area of operations. We've also tried to keep things moving forward into general matters, which includes some of the foreclosure matters, the real estate matter, as well as supporting the regular departments' operations as they continue. So beyond that, I do not have anything to report on at this time.
Any questions for the city attorney? Okay, city managers report? Marty, I'm not getting any audible from you again, I don't know why that's the case, I don't know if your mic is coming unplugged. Nothing.
How about now?
I see, I hear you now.
Okay. While this crisis has been going on, I wanted to let everyone know that the economic development organizations here in the county and the city have been meeting together. I got with them, they'll be meeting on a weekly basis, going through the different types of aid that are supposed to be coming down to businesses here in the county, we're looking forward to that money to start to flow, it has not started flowing yet. And so they're checking back up the line with the state and the feds to make sure that it continues to work its way through. We have had, the banks have had a significant number of individuals obviously looking for help through that SBA program. So we're looking forward to that happening. In relationship to the city employees, they're doing their level best in continuing with the social distancing, working at home, trading on and off, our office is doing the same thing. There is a new directive that just came down and we are very fortunate, we have some private vendors here have been very kind in helping us get some cloth masks that are, that are thick and at least somewhat fitted so that we can have essential employees have the masks that the governor's office is gonna be requiring. When we heard about this a few days ago, we actually jumped on top of it instead of waiting till the last minute. And we were hearing a number of cities, counties here in this part of the state that are saying, where are we gonna find something? Where are we gonna find it? And thanks to our employees and to some local businesses here, I think by tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest, we should be in pretty good shape on that issue. Also, that we're working together with the county, the police chief, Sean and I, we're on, on a little Zoom recording that, there'll be periodic Zoom recordings coming out that talk about different aspects like, what can you do at the parks? You know, what can't you do, what, what, how is the police enforcing things? How are social services, how do I get access to different things? So we're hopeful that that's gonna be helpful as well as getting information out to the members of the community. I am happy to report that so far at least, working on the paperwork side and behind the scenes, that the DRI projects are still moving along. And we look forward to the time when COVID-19 moves out of the way and that we can see some more shovels hit the dirt. And they'll be, I mean, there's more, there's, oh, there is one other thing of importance I wanted to let you know. With the budget that the governor has passed, it is, it was passed with the provision in there that appear, at certain times of the year, that he can come back in and actually take aid back that was approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. So with that in mind, we have taken a look at things we can hold off on spending right now. And we're being careful and conservative on those, looking at capital projects on case-by-case basis on whether money's gonna come in, you know, sufficiently and quickly, if it's grant funded and we have a good turnaround on funds and we're not up against the wall with cash, then, then we'll be in good shape. So far, other than that, it's, it's just a matter of learning how to work remotely versus working in the office. And, and we're just, honestly, I will have to say that the employees almost to a person, man and woman, have done a very good job and stepped up to the plate here during this COVID-19 incident.
Okay, a question for you. Cover a little bit on the VLT money, it's back in the budget, but what, what our plan is now, if we do get that money, how we're gonna allocate that or what we're gonna do with it? Because there's been questions, like since it's back in the budget, can we like redo the budget and take the tax raise away? And that's like, it's, it's too late, it's pretty much impossible at this point, so if you wanna just cover that, Marty?
I could cover it from two aspects, one, that's correct, our budget is finalized. And the second aspect I can cover on is that it is a piece of aid money and it is subject to recall by the governor's office if they feel that the state budget continues to remain in a hole. So there's still not a guarantee that the money's gonna be here. If the money does, if the money does show up, then we're gonna be very careful with that and judicious in recommending how we deal with things. Most likely, a, a most likely scenario is that our sales and use tax is gonna take a hit.
That's right.
And because of that fact, it may have to help fill some of the hole that money shows up for some of that loss of sales and, and use tax revenue, so.
Right, right, and, and we don't know, so it does, we have to be very careful with it. And, and now, here's the other thing, Marty, we need to start planning next year for that money not being in our budget and we need to not be surprised. We don't wanna have to be hasty because personally, I don't know how the rest of the country feels and I'm sure they agree with me, we don't wanna have to exceed the tax cap a second year in a row, I'd like to keep it within our means and below the tax cap. And, but that's gonna be some serious budgeting, so we have 11 months to figure it out and we need to start today to plan ahead because I don't wanna do it at the last minute.
And that's, and again, that starts with some of the planning we're doing this year in taking a look at how we're spending, at what time of year we're spending and how much we're spending. So what are our true needs, what are our true, true wants? And the other part of things that are going on right now, too, in relationship, and our assistant city manager is very busy with it and that is the software conversion along with the finance office, the clerk treasurer's office, human resource office. Those pieces of our financial software, they're right in the middle of the conversions now. And so this is a good time for us to go through this exercise with the budget, irregardless of whether we had challenges and we have challenges. So it's a good time for us to go through the exercise and that way we'll be able to have a good handle when we come to the quote-unquote official preparation of the budget and we'll be ready to, well, we'll actually be ready to, ready to go on dealing with the numbers as opposed to just waiting till October.
Right, any questions for the city manager?
Yes, I'm, I'm not waving goodbye, I'm waving my hand. Anyways, Marty, I really do not wanna count on that money whatsoever at this point. I really think our, our area is really gonna be hurting for taxes, property taxes, county taxes, water. I really feel sorry for the people and through our community at this time. And I really don't wanna count on anything, people are having a very difficult time, thank you.
And as Marty mentioned, we're gonna have a very difficult time because each, each day that we're not having our commerce, our economy is taking a hit and the sales tax is taking a hit and the state governor, the governor's budget is taking money out of the sales tax revenue to supplement hospitals before they give it back to the county. So not only are they taking AIM funding out of our sales tax revenue and then giving it to us, now they're adding $50 million towards hospital and then next year it's gonna be less, but eat, this year it's gonna take the biggest hit at a time when we're at the biggest hit ourselves from the economy, so.
You're absolutely right, the thing of it is, we can't count on any of this unless you have it in our hand and that's it. And yes, we're gonna be hurting for quite a while because they are gonna need it.
Well, and we'll, we'll end up using it for one-time purchases, maybe to bring back some of the cuts we did this year if they're needed and we can play with it. But we, we're not gonna use it towards our budget anymore, I don't, I don't want to, I don't think.
No, that's right.
Count on it and pull the rug out from underneath us next.
I said that before, not to count on this and, and that's it.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I think the hit on the sales tax is gonna be a lot more dire than we can anticipate, but traveling, if you travel over the thruway on 98, I think some of those hotels are closed now. On the other side, over the weekend, I haven't seen any vehicles there, super rate, I haven't seen any vehicles. So besides all the restaurants and the hotels and the clothing and the fuel sales have dropped, I, I think we could be facing some really tough times and I agree with Marty, we're, we're gonna be in for it. And I've, I've been in contact with a couple of county legislators, they have serious concerns and the assistant county manager has a very serious concern. So I think an austerity program to start, which is gonna be the word of the day, that's all, thank you.
Everybody's, and the county is hurting, and people gotta remember that even though the county is separate, we, we rely on each other and if they are in financial trouble, then we're in financial trouble. So if we're in financial trouble, they're in financial trouble, so we gotta stick together and we gotta keep things on the same, you know, page so that we don't, one of us doesn't get ahead of the other and it affects the other one, so. They're hurting with sales tax, we're hurting with sales tax, all the towns and villages are hurting. And at least we got the VLT money back, I, like Bob said, I don't think it's gonna be enough, I don't think it's gonna be enough outside.
No, is it, is it here? Did we definitely get it or you're waiting for it?
It'll come throughout the year, but like Marty.
Yeah, right, okay. Will I see it, forget it.
I agree with that, if, when we get it. I agree with that. If, when we get it, we'll put it in the, we'll put it in the general fund, and we'll just bank it because we're going to need it for next year and for other things, so.
That's right.
Anybody else have any comments in reference to that?
No.
Anything you'd like to hear the City Manager mention or whatever, so we can close out his report? Okay, committee reports. Anyone have a committee report or anything to mention?
We have a committee report.
Go ahead, Patty.
Just so everybody's aware, bid is still meeting. We're doing it by computer, but we are still meeting because the annual meeting was supposed to be now, but we're still working and coming along with it. You're still very much available.
Okay, anything else? Rosemary?
Our neighborhood task force meeting could not meet this month, but we will maybe the end of this month, or I know definitely in the beginning of May.
Okay, anyone else? Any unfinished business? Okay, Resolution 36-2020, Councilmember Byakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2021 budget reserve and expense accounts for a change to Batavia City Center roof alterations and replacement project.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Councilmember Veely, seconded. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
I think we lost, John's not here anymore. Continue on, and we'll see if we can get him back on the line.
Okay. McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Lisa, if you can hear me, could you contact Councilmember Canelli and see if we can reach him and see if you could at least dial in on the phone?
Yep, I'm on it.
Okay, thank you. We had a plan for this. If this happens to you, try to get Hook back on, and we're going to pause for a minute, and we'll see if we can get John back on before we close out this vote. I mean, obviously, it's going to pass, but we want to make sure he's at least accounted for, so.
Okay.
Just stand by a minute. Lisa's checking into it. This is bound to happen. I mean, we have electronics and everybody has different internet service, so I don't know what, how robust it is, but Bob and I were talking about it earlier, that certain services were having trouble today. Cell phone coverage was sketchy earlier today. I don't know if it was the wind or just I'm doing maintenance or what was going on. So there was some weird things going on with the internet. As soon as you find out one way or another, Lisa, would you please let us know?
Christian, I'm on the phone with John. He's lost connection through internet, so he's not quite sure if it's going to be quick or not. He'll attempt to get back on.
Okay, if you want, if you want to stay on the phone, okay, and at least we can hear if he has any comments or anything. You can't, I don't think you can vote for him by proxy, but if you could just stay on the phone and so he could at least be communicating while we're trying to hook back up.
Okay.
Okay, if you, Resolution 37-2020, Councilmember Pacino, please?
I move a resolution to discontinue the public use and to authorize the Council President to sign agreements for the sale of the property auctioned on March 14, 2020.
Seconded by?
Me.
Councilmember Christian? Any questions or concerns?
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Hold on, I think, I don't see John. I thought him pop up and then he disappeared.
I'm here.
Okay, John, your vote?
Yep, I lost internet access for some reason. I don't know if it's the wind or what.
Okay, so we're on the resolution to discontinue the public use for the property of East Main Street, the nine, six ninety-seven East Main?
Right.
Here's the last vote.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else before we adjourn?
How about the first resolution, Gino?
John, the first resolution, we lost you right before that, the roof project. Did you want to cast a vote on that as well?
Yes, my vote is yes.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
So anybody have any questions or concerns before we adjourn the meeting?
No.
No.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize for the roughness and the whatever. Hopefully, we only have to do this one more time, and we'll be back in person, back to normal business, hopefully. Motion to close?
You've got it.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is hereby closed. Take care, everybody. Stay safe, and hopefully this will be over soon.
You too. Bye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.